...first, 2025 will now come to order. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Devois.
Here.
Duffy. James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. I have the announcement of the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying time, date, and location included in any notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posting administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please stamp it and pledge allegiance.
Please join me by placing your hand over your heart, saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Incitation by Father Ryan.
We have a new president, a new congress, a new director, a new commissioner, a new sheriff. We pray for all of them. And for those who are not new, those who have been around a bit, we pray for renewed hearts in all of us, a desire to serve you, a commitment to be protectors and advocates for the poor and the most vulnerable in society. We pray that you give us your grace, your insight, your strength, and your will to do what is best for everyone. And we ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain in standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and who have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,317 residents of the state county. Thank you. Can I take a motion to approve the minutes of September 30th, 2024?
So moved.
Sir?
Moved by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners. Sorry. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Approval of the minute for January 7th, 2025. Need a motion?
So moved.
Sir?
Moved by Bartlett, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Approval of proclamation. Moved by Bartlett.
Second.
Second by Devois. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett. Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Administrator's report?
Thank you, Director. I think we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're still waiting for the undersheriff to get here. First, we're going to start with a presentation of the Lambert Castle Landscape Project for the county's Green Acres grant for this year. We have Michael Hanahan with Clark, Kate, and Hens. So, Michael, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. As Matt said, I'm Michael Hanahan. I'm a principal with Clark, Kate, and Hens Architects. We've had the privilege of working for the county at Lambert Castle for several years now, and it's been a wonderful opportunity for us, and there is great progress happening at the site. So as advertised, I'm here to present the Lambert Castle Historic Landscape Restoration Project Phase Two. A little bit of history for those who may not know. Lambert Castle was the Victorian-era mansion associated with the late or former silk magnet Kathleena Lambert. It was constructed in 1892 on a 53-acre site. By 1896, the site was expanded to include a carriage house, the tower, the north wing, a greenhouse, and a gatehouse. After Lambert fell on harder times, ultimately, the title found its way to the Passaic County Park Commission in 1928 as part of the 575-acre Garrett Mountain Reservation, and the site has been operated as a museum since 1934. Recently, the county commissioned our firm to do a conditions assessment in 2018. There was a significant water infiltration issue happening at the castle, which led to a comprehensive restoration of the castle proper, which completed in 2023. Last year, the rehabilitation of the carriage house was completed. And this year, we're scheduled to complete probably this spring what's considered Phase One, otherwise known as the pedestrian connection. That's that promenade between the carriage house and the castle. And we are currently out to bid with site improvements and a small storage building associated with the carriage house complex. Bid should be back in a couple of weeks. Assuming they're favorable, that work will occur this year as well. This proposed project, this next phase, Phase Two, will connect what we've been calling the pedestrian connection to the north lawn, which is already designed but awaiting funding from Green Acres. This will allow, this phase will allow the castle, the carriage house, and parts of the site to open to the public long term while the north lawn and other projects can occur in the future without having to shut down the castle again. Just some images here. You can see the deterioration of around the castle. While the castle looks beautiful, there's still some work to be done. This includes work at the historic staircase. You know, if you're coming from the parking lot down to the castle, you'll see that those stairs are in disrepair. Some of those massive existing site walls, some of the stones have fallen, and the existing terraces, which were not part of the original castle restoration, you can see the stones are heaving. They're, the terraces are not ADA accessible, and even when you get to them, they are not wheelchair-friendly. Just some additional images of site issues, including oxidation at the railings, where the railing is actually popping the face of the stone off, and some of the site walls around the west side of the castle are bowing from the weight of the earth that they're retaining. So this proposed project, Phase Two, is the area there kind of in, as you look at the top image on the right, you'll see the castle in the center with a black square dashed box around it. That is generally speaking the area envisioned by this project. It includes repairs to the retaining walls, resetting the marble terrace on the east side of the castle, new pavers in the courtyard to the north, new landscaping, which is shrubs and ornamental trees, and the reconstruction of the historic steps from the parking lot down to the castle. And just a larger version, so you can see everything I'm talking about here, kind of working from left to right on the screen. That circle on the left is the drop-off that's currently being constructed as part of the pedestrian connection, and that includes a ramp up to the main level of the castle, making it ADA compliant. We are, as part of this current project, at the bottom of that circle, there's sort of this sinuous or S-shaped ramp that will enable those front terraces to be ADA compliant and accessible to all. So that east terrace, which is at the bottom of the screen, will be reset, all the marble reset, the plant, you know, you see the plantings there in green, and it will be beautiful when it's constructed. To the north, you'll see a second circle, if you will. That is a new paver plaza that is at the bottom of the rebuilt stairs. To the right off the screen is the north lawn project, which is envisioned in the future. But that paver terrace sets itself up for that future project and also receives pedestrians coming down from the upper parking lot. And then to the top of the screen, the retaining wall, which is to the west of the castle, will be repaired, much like the retaining wall is currently being repaired as part of the pedestrian connection. So this scope of work, understand the county is seeking Green Acres funding. We provided an estimate in a, by an independent professional cost estimator, so it's not Michael's opinion, it's our professionals' opinion of what this will cost. It's their job to track the market. We believe that this total project cost is $3.365 million. And I believe that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
The, Mr. Hanahan, the repairs, are they going to use the same, same stone? How's that going to work?
So the goal with any restoration is to use as much of the existing material as you can without having to go and buy new. It's to reset the existing stone, so you have a lot of that fabric in place. Not to say we don't need to replace stone here and there. We've identified a quarry that has similar stone, and that stone will be used project to project. So even though this project has been broken up into various phases, the goal at the end of this is you'll never know what was Phase One, what was Phase Two. It should all look the same when complete. The specs are consistent project to project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, folks?
Yeah. This looks terrific. I guess one of my questions would be, we're talking about phases, what's next? And in particular, north of the newly paved circle and also the path to the tower, are there future plans for restoration there?
A question probably best asked of Kelly Raffel. That being said, we have drawings of the north lawn that are complete and ready for bid when the county is ready to bid them. We've already been commissioned to do that. We've been paid to do that. Drawings are done, just waiting funding, as far as I know personally. There are other projects we've been asked to give a proposal for that have not been enacted yet, which include a gatehouse and a greenhouse that used to be on site. It's the reconstruction of those. Don't know the county's appetite for that. And we've also been directed to proceed with the adaptive reuse of the former jail, I think it was a jail, for the historic site. So that work should be complete later this year and ready for bid at that time. There is a separate design team who's been worrying about the tower and some of the pathways, I understand, at the, on the mountain itself.
Yep.
I can't answer that.
So I can jump in there, Commissioner. The tower connection to the castle, I'm fairly certain that project's already underway as part of the Lambert Tower restoration we're doing. And as you can see by the number of phases we've done, we're piecing together the grant money. I'd say close to 75% of all the improvements we've done at the Lambert Castle site have been through grant funding. So there's been a lot of phases, and we're sort of picking off chunks that we can complete within what the county can contribute, but mostly driven by grants we've received from the, from Green Acres, from the New Jersey Historic Trust, from a state appropriation that our legislative delegation got for us. So fixing up old buildings is expensive, so we've been doing a little at a time.
I just have one question first. What was the proposed timeline of completion?
To have the drawings ready for this particular phase to go out to bid, this is shooting from the hip a little bit, sir, but...
No, so I guess my question is the overall project.
So Phase One, as Michael said, is out to bid right now. I believe we're opening bids February 7th?
Phase One is the, as I understood it, is the pedestrian connection, which is currently under construction.
Yeah, there is a...
A phase for the carriage house, which is currently out to bid.
Yeah, I'm mixing up all my phases. But there's a project at Lambert Castle that we're opening bids for, that we have grant money secured for for this year. I think the idea would be, assuming we're successful with this Green Acres grant, we would tee this up for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you to your firm for all the work you've helped us with at Lambert Castle.
Great, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Under Sheriff Cuadrado here. We're going to present a proclamation to him for his years of service to the Passaic County Sheriff's Office.
Absolutely.
We're going to, well, we're going to hold off on that. We have a presentation on PALS Plus by Mary Martin, the Director of the Wannacue Public Library, and the President of PALS Plus, and Luca Manna, the Executive Director. So Mary and Luca, come on up.
Good evening. It's great to be here tonight, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you about Passaic County libraries. Your ongoing support and investment of the Passaic County libraries really allows us to provide essential resources that enrich lives, you know? They build stronger communities, and they work to meet the ever-changing needs of our residents. Mr. Moff is handing off some statistics that I provided for you that really help paint sort of the healthy usage that our libraries are seeing. But tonight, I wanted to share real stories of, from our libraries, to show sort of the impact that our libraries have. You know, we're no longer just buildings filled with books, but we're vibrant, accessible resources that serve to educate, inspire, and empower everyone. In many ways, sort of libraries are serving as lifelines to people that are looking for opportunity, that they're looking to connect, and they're in need of hope. And I have this great example from one of our libraries. There was a man who was just released from incarceration, had, you know, was struggling with his comeback into normalcy, and he didn't really know where to start. So he went to the library, apparently, you know? He felt this is someplace I can go to, and, you know, I'll be treated like a human being, right? And he worked with somebody on staff, and that person helped him work through a resume and apply for jobs. He eventually got a job overseas, but when he came back, he went to the library, he came back with his family, and just was there to thank the librarian for helping him make that fresh start. So what, to me, this speaks of where libraries are in terms of meeting people where they are in their lives and providing the support that everybody needs to sort of take that, those next steps, and often those steps are transformative. We also, as you know, libraries cater to every age and stage of life. Another example recently, at a children's program at one of our libraries, a young girl with special needs was paired with a volunteer. Now, this young girl was older, but she read at a second-grade level, so, you know, obviously, you need to improve those skills. Through that work as a result, this person now has become a voracious reader of historical fiction now. No comment on the genre. If you like historical fiction, great. But nevertheless, just the idea that through that, you know, her development has now improved, and she can really partake in sort of experiencing life much better. We have another example of a staff member who delivered books to somebody in a nursing home every three weeks, and until he unfortunately passed. But with every, with every visit, this person gratefully sort of left a note of gratitude. So these are really acts of kindness, of library staff going out of their way in reaching those who may otherwise be isolated. I have a whole bunch of examples. So there's also sort of providing support during vulnerable times in people's lives, when folks are scared and they really don't know what to do. So one example is of a library that provides wireless hotspots to women shelters. So at this moment, you think about what brings you to that place. You may have an iPad, but it may be a Wi-Fi-only iPad. You don't have internet access. So by going to the library and getting this hotspot, you have direct access to services that you would otherwise not have when you need them most. Technology is a huge factor, and even though we're all so technologically savvy, we're so used to our devices, there is a huge digital divide throughout our country, but certainly in our area. And we know that technology is no longer a luxury, it's a necessity for people, and libraries step in to bridge that gap, and they ensure that everybody, regardless of age or background, has those tools and skills to survive through tech literacy programs or personalized support. They empower individuals to sort of navigate the complexities of this digital landscape that is growing more complex seemingly every day. So an example I have is a patron trying to apply for state's anchor benefit programs, which is a cumbersome process. If you've never done that before, it requires, you know, verification through ID.me, and it's really inaccessible for folks if you have a smartphone or the technology. So with this, working with the library over two hours, they navigated all the error messages, which, you know, are quite a few, and just the technical roadblocks worked through them and just completed the application. So without the library, this person would have been unable to file for the benefits that they would have, they were entitled to. So it's a frustrating reality for many facing sort of similar challenges. And if you ever offered tech support to anybody, you should have listened to me try to explain to my mother how to take a picture and email it to me on the cellphone. It can be really frustrating. But nevertheless, you know, we soldier through and really sort of work on that connection. There's also sort of senior citizens who really dread using computers, but thanks to the library, through programming, now sort of confidently emailed their family and managed telehealth. So it isn't just about entertainment, it's really some, you know, life, life skills that are necessary to keep going. Another, of course, is, you know, job help through it, you know? Technology in job searching is now sort of a common, so going to the library to learn the basic computer skills, left with a resume, a job interview, and, you know, more confidence. Also, another story of a student that didn't have internet access at home, so they went to the library and used the library computers to apply for college and the financial aid programs. And today, this student is the first in their family to attend college. There are, you know, hundreds of these, and I have more, but these are all true stories that I asked my libraries to send to me. So these are not just, you know, sort of ideals, they're actually happening every day in our libraries. Crisis is a big issue where libraries step in, especially when patrons are struggling to find stable housing, and they come to the library and they work, again, with staff for filling out applications, looking at shelters, government assistance. And through the help, the patron was able to secure housing and, you know, began building a better life. Libraries, the evolution of libraries in recent years has really been space as well. Libraries have become the third space or the palace for the people, and they are welcoming. Everybody is welcome. There are places where you can connect, you can learn, you can develop socially, and you get a sense of belonging to a community through the library. Programming isn't just about calendars, it's very much about creating connections and lifelong learning opportunities. In Clifton, a simple, sort of a profound moment came when somebody, a mother who was there with her child for a storytime, just said, "I hope they never take this away." And we came to learn that this child had sort of developmental issues as well, and she was visually impaired and needed the library in order to access the New Jersey Talking Book and Braille Center at the New Jersey State Library. So really, it's creating that space for people to thrive. Torowa is huge on programming. They have more programmings, I think, than any other library I've come across, from everything, from classes, art classes, to exercise, to musical concerts. There are opportunities for patrons to gather, to learn, and really engage in, with their neighbors in a safe and welcoming environment. There are many partnerships that allow libraries to do that. So it allows the reach to go even further. So the, and this is partnerships with community and county organizations. So Passaic Public Library, for instance, hosts the Offices of Literacy Volunteers of America, and they're providing them space so for their tutors to commit and work with adult learners. Libraries are also serving as early voting sites. This was very big this year. Folks were not as prepared perhaps for the influx of early voters that came to the libraries, but it worked. Additionally, there's partnerships with the Passaic County Department of Health, LA Heap, DCHA, which is a great partner for us, whether it be social services or museum passes or the book festival, which I've seen many of you at over the last four years, or three years, fourth year, June 14th, save the date. All that aside, traditional services are still a cornerstone of what libraries provide. So these include storytimes, large print collections, movies, digital resources. Patrons really rely on us to be able to access these resources. And demand for digital materials has seen month by month over the last 10 years, year to year grow. I've never seen, I've been in libraries 30 years, I've never seen any service grow to the extent that digital usage has over the last decade. And libraries are investing a tremendous amount to, into making these collections readily available for patrons. The hardest part to talk about now is sort of where libraries are in fighting to remain true to the core values that define librarianship. They are, libraries are one of the few remaining public spaces that welcome everybody, regardless of wealth, beliefs, background. They are democratic institutions at our core and committed to the exchange of ideas. And librarians right now, prepared or not, are forced to be prepared at being at the frontline of censorship and book bans. And I remember Commissioner Barlow, you speaking at Woolen Park opening about that, and thank you for doing so. Censorship and book bans are, are there, are here, and librarians are sort of at that front lines and really fighting and, you know, fighting for that core belief of free access to information. And while they are free to the public, they do require sustained funding, and that's responsibility that you've graciously supported over the years. So thank you for your support over the last few decades. Thank you for your time, really. I hope that these stories really sort of help paint a picture to see how real lives in Passaic County are touched by your libraries and how your, your support helps doing that. So on behalf of myself, Mary Martin, who's here tonight, she's the Director of the Wannacue Public Library and President of PALS Plus, but most importantly, the residents of the communities we serve. So thank you for your commitment, helping us build stronger and working at the communities, and really for believing in the power of libraries. If you ever want to go on a library tour trip, just, just ask, I'll be happy to take her around. So thank you all. You have any questions or?
No questions? Well, Luca?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming, and Mary, thank you for coming, and thank you for all the work you're doing in our community.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado, who is retiring sort of from, from the sheriff's officer, going to a civilian role. We're going to recognize his distinguished career. Director Barlow, Sheriff Adamo, thank you for joining us. Chief Akins, thank you. Sheriff, you've been on, you know, you've been in office for three months. This is your first meeting. We were wondering where you are, but thanks for coming tonight. Humberto, if you want to come up too?
Sheriff, please join us. And eventually, we'll have everybody else up here, don't worry. Before we start, I want to acknowledge the founder and chairwoman of the Passaic County Puerto Rican Commission, Peggy Anastas of Wayne is here with us. Good evening, Peggy. And welcome to everybody who's here to celebrate Humberto with us. I don't bite, get in the camera frame. So this is a special pleasure and privilege for me to be able to read this into the record because Humberto, you and your wife Carol and so many others have been extraordinary public servants and great friends to all of us here, but particularly to me and my family, and it's a privilege to read this into the record. I'm going to give Tom... I'm going to give Tom an opportunity to say a few words, but then you'll get your turn as well. So, whereas, the Board of County Commissioners, yes, how you know I'm starting, whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Paseo has the desire to recognize Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado as he concludes his law enforcement career at the Paseo County Sheriff's Department, and whereas, Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado has made history as the first Latino from the City of Patterson Police Department to serve in the Paseo County Sheriff's Administration and as Under Sheriff, and whereas Humberto Cuadrado studied criminal justice at the Paseo County Community College and Fairleigh Dickinson University, completed advanced training in forensics and major crimes at Princeton University and the FBI, earned certifications in bioterrorism and hazmat, and completed the FBI LEEDA executive training at Quantico, Virginia, further honing his leadership skills. And whereas, Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado is a United States veteran who served as a military police officer in the United States Army, is a volunteer Patterson Constable, served 14 years in leadership roles such as Director of Fleet Management, Community Policing, Auxiliary Services, Court Security, and as Under Sheriff for the past four years. And whereas, Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado spent nearly three decades in the City of Patterson Police Department's Major Crimes Division, solving complex cases and enhancing public safety, he also trained countless new officers as a police instructor at the Paseo County Police Academy, sharing his expertise and serving as a role model for the next generation of law enforcement professionals. And whereas Humberto Cuadrado was appointed to the New Jersey Puerto Rican Commission by New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy, serves as the co-chair of the Hispanic Multipurpose Service Center, and is actively involved in organizations like the statewide Orixwiners Education Alliance, the Latino Democratic Leadership Alliance of Paseo County, and as advisor to the Dominican American-Elected and Appointed-Elected Officials Caucus, NJD AECOC, among others. And whereas Humberto Cuadrado is the founder of the Patterson Hispanic Police Association, and is a proud member of the Patterson Police PBA Local Number One, Paseo County Retired Police and Fire Association, the Honor Legion of the New Jersey and New York Police Departments, and the Blue Knights. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Paseo County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado for his years, decades of distinguished service, and his unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of the community, and for the significant contributions he has made to the county of Paseo. And be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Under Sheriff Humberto Cuadrado and his family health and happiness. Humberto, privileged to present this to you.
On behalf of the Paseo County Sheriff's Office, I would like to thank you for your four years of service as Under Sheriff, but more importantly, what that meant to me as working under you as chief, what an honor it was to hear stories of him working along with my father and my brother in the city of Patterson. I think it goes a long way to, to say that 40 years really shows your unwavering support and commitment to public service. So I am very thankful for everything that you've done, and I wish you nothing but the best in your new position.
This was a surprise, by the way, this morning, I got a phone call that I was going to be, you know, here today, tonight. And first and foremost, I want to thank Commissioner John Bartlett and the entire Paseo County Commissioners, and also the administration, Paseo County Administration, Paseo County Sheriff, thank you, for honoring me on my years of service as a law enforcement officer. This career has been a profound part of my life. It was a surprise to me this morning to receive this news. One, I have loved deeply and worked tirelessly for, I am grateful for this recognition and for the opportunity to reflect on my journey. I thank God for blessing me with the opportunity to serve and for surrounding me with extraordinary people throughout my career. From my time in the military to my years with the City of Patterson Police, and the past 14 years with the Paseo County Sheriff's, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve my city, my county, and my country, doing the work I love most, which is law enforcement. I thank God for always protecting me in, in this unpredictable line of work. Each day leaving home has an officer or a major crimes detective is met with the hope and blessing of returning safely. I also want to send my deepest gratitude to Sheriff Bertnik for entrusting me with administrative responsibility across multiple divisions on the sheriff's office. And I, I would like to, a moment of silence for Sheriff Bertnik. God bless his soul, thank you. His support allowed me to recruit and work alongside some of the most dedicated men and women in law enforcement, and I am truly thankful for his appointment of me as Under Sheriff. I know this appointment was also supported by the body of commissioners, thank you. And I am incredibly grateful for their confidence in me. To my officers, thank you for always doing your job in a manner to be proud of, with respect and professionalism. To Sheriff Thomas Adamo, who I also had worked with in a, in a period during these 14 years, thank you for allowing me to continue helping the sheriff's office in a different capacity. Thanks to my friends for being here. I know I always have your support, thank you very much, I love you all. Lastly, I want to thank my wife Carol and my entire family for their unwavering support throughout the years. Their encouragement has been the foundation that kept me steady in the challenging but rewarding career. It has been a privilege to serve, and I am deeply honored by this recognition. Thank you, Commissioner Bartlett.
Let's get the commissioners down here and the family up for a photo. All right. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the stewardship application for the County of Paseo, County of Paseo seeking funding through the State of New Jersey Green Acres Program for historic landscape improvements at Lambert Castle, which we just heard the presentation on. So I'm going to give Lou a second, and then we can jump into that public hearing.
Paseo County Board of County Commissioners, Stewardship Application Public Hearing. Can I have the announcement, Lou?
Yes. This public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public regarding the County of Paseo seeking funding through the State of New Jersey Green Acres Program for historic landscape improvements at Lambert Castle located at Three Valley Road, Patterson, New Jersey. The project scope, the county of Paseo proposes improvements at Lambert Castle Historic Landscape Restoration Phase Two. The project includes restoration of granite, retaining walls, garden balcony, and walking paths into the castle. A concept plan showing the proposed changes, a preliminary cost estimate, and the environmental impact estimate for the project can be found at www.paseaucountyNJ.org/DCHA. This public hearing is being held today at 6:15 on Tuesday, January 21st, in Room 220 in Paseo County Administration Building. The following public hearing was noticed in the Herald News and the Record.
Okay, roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Bartlett. I'm sorry, I muscle memory. Deputy Director Lazar and Director Lapur.
Here.
All right. Did I get it somewhat right? And I apologize, I'm sorry.
Anyone wish, present wish, desire to be heard on this application? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion to open a public hearing. Bartlett, second by Cruz, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on this application?
And welcome back, it's been a while.
Please state your name and address.
Okay. Anne Schnackenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey, Paseo County. Have to say, all the accessibility is very welcome, and I know people in that community are very excited about that. I don't know that I can ask questions, but I am curious about just a few things with the renovation of the, or restoration renovation of the basketball court up at Garrett, there's, there was no drawing, so I don't know if there's going to be an expansion.
I'm sorry, this is on Lambert Castle.
This is just on Lambert Castle? Okay. All right, I'm sorry, I had the three pages. Okay, Lambert Castle, again, accessibility, very welcome. I'm curious about the north lawn project, is that already been designed and done, or is that something coming? And that's all I really have on that. Okay, that's it.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on Lambert Castle application? By Cruz.
Second.
By Lazar. Close, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Remove it.
Second.
Motion made by Lazar, second by Devoe, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes, kind of the public hearing, on, on public notice, Jake's Law Playground application.
This public hearing, this public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public regarding the County of Paseo seeking funding through the State of New Jersey Green Acres Program for improvements at Weasel Brook Park located at 794 Park Drive, Clifton, New Jersey. Project scope for the County of Paseo proposes to create the following new facilities at Weasel Brook Park, a completely inclusive playground, a concept plan showing the proposed changes, a preliminary cost estimate, and an environmental impact assessment for the project can be found at www.paseaucountyNJ.org/DCHA. This public hearing is being held today at 6:15 on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, in Room 220, Paseo County Administration Building in Patterson, New Jersey. The following public hearing was noticed in the Herald News and the Record.
Have a roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Here. Motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Devoe, second by Lazar, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this application, Jake's Law Playground? Please step forward.
Okay, you got my name and all.
I'll do it again for the record.
Okay. Just, people are very excited about having an accessible playground at Weasel Brook Park, I know that for a fact. I am curious where it's going to be located, is it being the old playground leaving and the new one coming in, or is this going in another location? That's basically my question, if I had one, thank you.
Second by Cruz, second by Lazar, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Bart, um, first by Bart, and second by Devoe, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoe, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes, county announcement of the open public, of the public hearing on urban parks development application.
This public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public regarding the County of Paseo seeking funding through the State of New Jersey Green Acres Program for improvements at Garrett Mountain Reservation located at Park Road, Patterson, New Jersey. The project scope, the County of Paseo proposes to renovate the basketball courts, a concept plan showing the proposed changes, a preliminary cost estimate, and the environmental impact assessment for the project can be found at www.paseaucountyNJ.org/ for the project can be found at www.pasaiccountynj.org/dccha. The public hearing is being held today at 6:15 on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 in Room 220 in the Passaic County Administration Building in Patterson, New Jersey. The following public hearing was noticed in the Herald News and the Record.
Can I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Here. Having a problem having that? Does anyone present desire to be heard on this application?
There, I guess I'm it.
Wait, wait.
One second.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made by Bartlett, second by DeVeau. Messed me up.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Now, does anyone present desire to be heard on this application?
Okay, hi there. Okay, so regards to the basketball court, I'm curious as to, without a schematic, it's hard to see where all the pieces are going together. So I understand that the renovation is being done. Is it an expansion? And my two cents, aside from concerns about impervious surface expansion, would be a request for vegetation. Many, many, many times, I've gone around on busy days and had children, people, running in front of the car because the location of that is, you know, up on a hill. So the ball rolls down the hill, and you got an issue there. So I've always thought that, gee, if you put some hedges or something there, some kind of vegetative barriers, it would also soften the way it looks and blend it further into the feeling of the mountain rather than having it stand out as a sports area separate from it. So I'm concerned if it's being expanded, but I'm also concerned about safety and the aesthetics of it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion made by Cruz to close, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second by Bartlett, second by Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes.
Director, if I may, pleasure some of Ann's questions. The north lawn, I don't believe so, but Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, the north lawn is at a part of this application? I don't mean to put you on the spot. I don't think so. I think... Yeah, I didn't think so. There's plans. Phase three for the north lawn. The Weasel Brook Park Playground, that'd be an in-kind replacement of the playground equipment that's already there. And then the basketball court application, we wouldn't be expanding, but trying to do a lot of what you talked about of, you know, enclosing and a fence of some sort to try and keep the balls on the court. And then it would be some landscaping and benches and signs, things like that. I would just note that there are surveys on the website if the Commissioners and Passaic County residents could fill them out. That's a new requirement, a public outreach requirement for our Green Acres application. So I think the more participation we get from the public, the better projects we get. So I would encourage everyone to go to the website and fill out those surveys. Thank you. That's it, Director.
Just briefly, I wanted to thank everyone who reached out with words of kindness and condolence to me and my family since the passing of my father ten days ago. Your community is a great company. Yeah, thank you, Director. I just have a couple of things. First, there's twenty-one items on the admin and finance for my college's consideration on tonight's agenda. Also, our youth leadership retreat, which is hosted up in Camp Hope. Kerry Klug from our rec department runs it through the Youth Services Commission. I just wanted to recognize them. They submitted the actual retreat to the NJRPA, the Parks and Recreation Association in the State of New Jersey for an Excellence in Education and Programming Award. And I'm proud to announce that it won the award. We were selected to receive that award this year at the conference down in Atlantic City. So I just want to commend the work of Kerry and Youth Services under the direction of Rev. Starr for that program and its continued success. And also, finally, I want to thank the members of Public Works and Facilities that battled the snowstorm that we just had. I was able to witness the operation from start to finish up at the Nike Base. I just want to just, again, thank their work. I saw, you know, their organization of it, the trucks getting out of there and getting to their respective locations. And the personnel, individual, over a hundred individuals of county employees spread throughout, people that come over from other departments, the mosquito division, Parks Department, Sheriff Department, all those with CDLs jumping trucks and the individuals on the ground that are clearing sidewalks and pathways for our residents. So I just want to extend a thank you to them. They did a phenomenal job. And as far as the feedback from the community I've heard, up until now, the county did a great job with this storm. So thank you again. That's all.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Last time, I think. I might as well. I just want to express that I'm very happy, and I know a lot of other people are, that there are more hikes happening in Rifle Camp Park. The hawk walk, and there used to be a hawk watch there. There's actually people who do this in other parts of New Jersey also, and there had been one there where people actually go and count the amount of hawks and the different species going by. So that was nice to see. And, you know, and the other walks too, the other nature walks taking advantage of the view and just the natural area there. And that's good. Like it. Thank you.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
So moved.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
You will.
I'll read it into the record.
Okay. Thank you.
We are receiving the supplemental test statement from the CFO for, and then we have Bond Ordinance 2025-01. A bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and acquisitions of new communication and signal system equipment and the new additional or replacement equipment and machinery in, by, and for the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of fifteen million four hundred thousand to pay the cost thereof to the appropriate capital surplus to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Okay, motion to approve Bond Ordinance 2025-01.
I move it.
Moved by Lazar, second by Bartlett. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Need a motion of personnel?
I'll move the personnel.
Second.
Moved by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Motion on the bills?
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. I still don't know your voice. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by DeVeau. Second.
Second.
Second by Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, DeVeau, Deputy Director Lazar, Director Lapur.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Safe trip home.